Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting of the City Council of Pearland for Monday, February 26th, year 2018, would you believe that? Been a long time, and I do appreciate all of you being here tonight. It's been a strange day. There was something in the sky, I think I'd call it a sun, and it wasn't raining. So it was kind of, my system was a little confused as to what was going on. It's a pleasure to be at here tonight, so let us crank up, go to work. Invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Moore, and our Police Chief, Chief Flowers, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight. We ask for your wisdom to guide us in making decisions of the city. We ask that you watch over the men and women in the military here and abroad. We ask that you watch over our first responders, and each one of us as we go home tonight. Keep us safe. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Can we face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Texas pledge?
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Moving in our agenda, to item number three on our agenda, roll call. Our council is here and present with bright and shiny faces. Moving further down to item number four on our collective agenda, which is Citizens to Be Heard. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim, Derek Reed, to present those for our consideration. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I'm gonna start off with the, I guess, the general public comments. When you get to the podium, please say, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. I'll let you know when it's about a minute and a half left, and then I'll let you know again when it's about 30 seconds left. And so, I'm gonna start off with F.J. Jones. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Jones. Can please state your name and address?
My name is F.J. Jones. I reside at 5519 Autumn Ash Lane, Rosheren, Texas, 77583. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Lakes of Savannah, as well as Brazoria County MUD 21. I've come before this council several times on the same issue. Fire Station 6 needs to be manned, period. It needs to be manned. Brazoria County MUD 21 pays Pearland City Council over $27,000 a month. And when we get a response, we typically hear, "Y'all are not taxpayers." But there's no delay in cashing the $27,000 a month check that we send. And I just wanna know, what is it gonna take? Is it gonna take a situation like what happened in Florida for Pearland to come from Pearland Town Center to help our children? Because I think that's gonna make a statement, when we have to wait 30 minutes because somebody decided to do something that they shouldn't have done. When I visited the fire station a month ago, I could take two giant steps out the back door and be at the back door of Savannah Lakes Elementary. That's how close it is. And quite frankly, I'm just tired of coming before the board feeling like I'm asking you to do us a favor. We paying our way. Our citizens, the City of Pearland doesn't even have to maintain the building, we do that. So on top of the 20, I'm gonna say this again, $27,000 a month that we pay, we are responsible for maintaining our building. That is not something that any other fire station in Pearland has to do. Once they pay their taxes, those taxes cover every fire station. So in addition to paying a monthly fee, we still have to pay to keep our grounds clean. We have to cut our grass, we have to make sure the place stays clean. Anything that happens, we have to make sure that it gets paid and taken care of. And I just wanna know, what is it gonna take? You have two schools, two elementary schools that this fire station would serve, Don Jeter and Savannah Lakes. And if Manville can't get there fast enough, Rodeo Palms is almost in walking distance, Rodeo Palms Junior High. And there are several subdivisions that are around here. We have a park, a trailer park behind us, and we also have Cold River Ranch that stands to benefit. But right now, the citizens of Savannah Lakes are the ones footing the bill. But we not getting anything in return.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up.
I think I said enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Dolores Jenkins?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Reed and City Councilmembers and staff. My name is Dolores Jenkins. I reside at 5305 Creek Mill Lane, Rosheren, Texas. I am representing Lakes of Savannah and Brazoria County MUD Board 21. I am here this evening to share my concerns regarding the staffing of Fire Station Number 6. During my attendance at your strategic planning workshop on February 17th, 2018, Mr. Pearson, Mr. Clay Pearson, City Manager, stated that a proposal to staff Fire Station 6 had been presented to Brazoria County MUD 21 and 22, but he had not heard back from us, so the ball was in our court. Since I and my colleague was not permitted to speak, I would like to speak now on that issue. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Pearson's statement regarding the staffing issue. During the regular council meeting session on Monday, October 23rd, 2017, the district issued a cost proposal to the mayor and city council members regarding the staffing of Fire Station Number 6. Per today's date, the district has not received a response from, from the City of Pearland regarding our, regarding the cost proposal that was presented to you. However, I would like to thank Mayor Pro Tim Reed and Councilmember Perez for coming over to talk to us during the break, during your planning session. And you also asked for a meeting, so that we could discuss the staffing of Fire Station 6 and the miscommunication you've received concerning calculations to pay to have that fire station staffed. At this point, we are requesting a meeting immediately, so that we can discuss this matter, we can iron out any issues you may have, or any questions or concerns you may have, so that Fire Station 6 staffing can be included in your FY 18, 19 budget funded and beyond. We, we and District 21 and 22 has did everything you have asked us to do. We have abided by the agreement, we have paid more than our fair share, and nothing happens. It seems like we have been forgotten. In your white paper, you didn't even mention staffing that fire station, even though we have come before this board on numerous occasions. In closing, I hope that you all will get in touch with us, so that we can sit down and have a meeting, so we can get the fire station staffed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person will be Ms. Medlock, Renee Medlock.
I'm Renee Medlock. I reside at 14106 Spring Hill Lane, Rosheren, Texas. I stand here before you tonight, yet again, to beg, for lack of a better word, that you all address our issue with Fire Station Number 6 once and for all. There seems to be a consorted effort here, for whatever reason, I'm not sure what that reason is, to ignore our plea. Again, not quite sure what, what the reason behind that is, but we are a large community. We are at the end of, of construction. Both Savannah Lakes North and South will have in excess of 3,200 homes. We have constructed a fire station at the direction of the City Council. Pearland City Council gave us direction on how that fire station needed to be constructed, and we did that. Not only did we do it, we paid for it, in excess of a million dollars, that we've paid to have the fire station constructed. And according to the agreement, once that construction was completed, services were to commence from that fire station. So for the last five years or so, the fire station has remained unmanned. As Director Jones mentioned, with two elementary schools that far away from the fire station, heaven forbid, we do see a situation like what happened in Florida. What would happen to our children? And I think one of the councilmembers has grandchildren that attend that school. That, that, why do we have to wait till something like that happens before we sit down and have a real conversation and real negotiation about what needs to take place with that fire station? Also, as Director Jones mentioned, not only have we built the fire station, we pay in excess of $27,000 every single month, and it pains me to sign that check every month, as I sit representing Brazoria County MUD 21.
One minute.
And then not only do we pay you in excess of $27,000 a month, we maintain that fire station. We maintain the grounds, we pay the utilities, and you all are using that fire station as, as your own storage facility, where you store your, your spare vehicle and your parade vehicle. That's what you're using the fire station for, when that fire station could be and should be manned to help and be ready and available for that community, for our families in Lakes of Savannah. So yet again, I stand before you, as I have on numerous occasions before, to ask that you please, let's roll up our sleeves, let's put away whatever these petty differences that there are that are keeping us from having constructive, real, serious conversation as to what needs to happen to get that fire station manned, as it should be according to the agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next is Mr. John Kalkalies.
Oh, you got it right, I'm surprised. Very good job. John, got it. My name is John Kalkalies, live in, also in Lakes of Savannah. Distinguished Councilman Mayor Reed, it's a pleasure to talk to you today again. I keep getting the argument that when the agreement was signed with Lakes of Savannah for fire coverage, it was based on a volunteer staff. And for that, we were charged a connection fee of $4.38, which I get, that makes sense, we were covering the cost of it. Since then, Pearland has transitioned to a full-fledged fire department where it has full, full non-volunteer staff. For that, our cost now is $16.73, so you can imagine the increase. It was designed for volunteers, the agreement was for volunteers, but the calculations you're giving us now that we are paying are for full-time firefighters, which we don't have. We're paying $27,000 a month, a surplus after expenses of $242,000 a year. That's staggering. That's hard to justify to the taxpayers, to my neighbors, when I have meaningful conversations around their dinner table about why their taxes went up. I can't give them a good answer, I don't have one. I need your help. We sent you a letter, an official request. We're also sent with that the same proposal we sent you back in November, we sent it again, and we're, all we wanna do is meet at the table, iron out the differences, there's gotta be a solution that is equitable for both parties. We're not opposed to paying our fair share, I think we've proven that, to the tune of over $360,000 a year. We just need you to come to the table and match us. I will leave you with one question, and this question was posed to me by a resident, and it caught me off-guard, and I was not able to answer it, and I hope you can. And I really want you to think hard about the number that I'm gonna ask you for. This one question, how many families in Lakes of Savannah have to die before you take us this situation seriously? I really want you to give that some serious thought.
Ms. Dawn Lawless?
Please state your name. Thank you. I'm Dawn Lawless. I'm here representing Counseling Connections for Change. Our address is 2549 Roy Road in Pearland, 77581. I'd like to begin by thanking y'all for the funding that you have provided to our agency. We do provide mental health services to the community for those who are uninsured or underinsured. And I appreciate your time this evening. Since Harvey, our agency has been working in a completely different arena of needs. We have provided crisis counseling services in the shelters, the disaster recovery centers here, and also are providing free counseling services to ongoing needs for victims of Harvey. Part of that funding has come through the CDBG money that we received, and at present, we are 50%, we have used over 50% of those funds. We secured additional funding through a generous cooperative grant by the United Way and Dow Chemical, which specifically allocated money to victims of Harvey. I was also able to meet with Susan Holloway and Chenda Moore at Pearland ISD, and we currently have an MOU in place to provide crisis counseling services to youth who are still displaced and identified as homeless in the district. Through multiple discussions with Pearland representatives, six schools were actually identified as the most needy. However, I had no concept what that true need was until this past Wednesday. We went in with the assumption that we would be providing services at these six different schools to about 50 different students. And during a meeting, once they had compiled their numbers, I was shocked to hear the need. In just those six schools, there are 245 children who have experienced trauma, are identified as homeless, and have been displaced as a result of Harvey. That's just six schools. So I've spoken briefly with Mr. Hardy, and he's apprised of the situation. I'm coming to the council tonight because this is a community need that is unmet and honestly, a public concern. There's enough data in our field to show that unresolved trauma for children, those who have lost everything, can lead to social stressors long-term that are going to be debilitating economically to our community, issues like mental illness, delinquency, unemployment, and others. I'm asking the city to consider an additional funding source of $18,000 to provide 164 additional hours of crisis response to the schools, specifically those children who have been affected by Harvey. We have a real opportunity here to serve in this way. This is a short-term funding source while the school is finding additional resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lumbard.
Lumbard. That's what I was gonna say next.
Adrian Lumbard. I'm at 2818 Poplar Creek Lane. I am the president of the Country Place HOA. I come to you tonight with a very, very profound thank you, but also with a request. Now, I was out, because of various responsibilities, I was out at the height of Hurricane Harvey. I was outside throughout the hurricane, but I was out there at the crest. And because I was out there, I walked the waters from the banks of Clear Creek, across McCord, into our neighborhood, and I can tell you that most of the water that was in our yards and in our houses came from Clear Creek, not from the skies. I thank you, I thank you profoundly for the work that you've been doing and working with the Army Corps of Engineers and with others, all the way up to Washington DC. In case you didn't know it, even Paul Ryan knows the name Clear Creek now. And when the Speaker of the House knows our neck of the woods and our neighborhood, I think it's a good thank you to you for the efforts that you've been doing on trying to get this underway. I've recently heard the best news, that funding is on its way, and we are on the verge of having a project get underway that's been on the books for 50 years. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, it feels like one step forward, two steps back, because no more than a week after I heard that the funding had come through, I was at a meeting where a developer was standing in front of us talking about building six-story condominiums on our side of the, our neighborhood, beside Clear Creek. Right beside Clear Creek, when we build our neighborhood, we were forced to change the design so that we don't have one-story houses right beside the creek. They're going to build six-story condominiums right beside the creek. They stood there and said, "Don't worry, we won't flood your yards, we're gonna send the water into the creek." People, every single inch of water they send in the creek isn't going downstream, it's coming into our houses. This will come before your board in April. Please give serious consideration to the flooding that's gonna come into the homes of Country Place, if you approve the project the way it's being designed right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jared Hauser?
Here I am again. I'm gonna try to get this done under three minutes, but if I can't, I'm hoping that one of my constituents will allow me some time so that I may finish. My name is Gerard Hauser. I live at 2807 Honeysickle, Rosheren, Texas. During the course of the annexation of Section A, our group has found numerous unlawful inconsistencies throughout the process. Some of the information that the councilman and the mayor might have received to make your decisions may not have been accurate. Nonetheless, Texas Local Government Law Code requires you to follow the letter of the law on the annexation process, and you did not. The City of Pearland purposely failed to follow the Texas Local Government Law Code 43.0561C, which requires that a municipality must post notice of the hearings on the municipality's internet website, if it has an internet website, and publish notice of the hearings in a newspaper of general circulation in that municipality and in the area proposed for annexation. The City of Pearland did publish notices in a newspaper of general circulation, but not one of them came to Section A. As it is the only available, it is only available by a paid prescription. Therefore, we did not receive legal notification, and you did not follow the law. The mayor and city council did receive our petition with 99 signatures, as this legal document was stamped by the Pearland City Secretary. The mayor and city council also were sent an email stating this information. Additionally, in this same law code, major inconsistencies were reported in the number of acres Pearland was annexing. The surveyor abstract meets and bounds description was dated and certified as 895 acres by C.L. Davis, on August 23rd, 2017. At this time, Pearland knew that Section A was comprised of 895 acres. Ordinance 1548 proposing to annex Section A was listed as 885 acres instead of the 895 acres as certified by C.L. Davis.
20 seconds, sir.
The service plan listed on Pearland's website and given to us at the meetings was also listed as 885 acres instead of 895 acres as certified by Mr. C.L. Davis. The letter mailed to all property owners dated August 29th stated that Section A was going to be annexed as, and was comprised of 885 acres instead of 895 acres as certified by C.L. Davis. The annexation information brochure on Pearland's website or handed out at hearings stated 885 acres instead of 895 acres.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to wrap, wrap it up if you could.
I want to give up my time.
What's your name?
My last name is C.H.E.A. I'm a Republican.
What's his last name?
C.H.E.O.U., man.
You have three minutes.
Thanks, sir. So then the annexation information brochure on Pearland's website, website and handed out at hearings also stated 885 acres instead of the 895 acres as certified by C.L. Davis. From what I understand, Mr. Davis has been doing all of your certifications for 30 years, and he didn't get this wrong. Y'all kept getting it wrong. The City of Pearland posted a public notice in the Pearland Reporter newspaper stating 914 acres for Section A on September 20th and September 27th, which was more than a month after C.L. Davis certified the acreage as 895 acres, and Pearland still reported incorrectly. We also have certified copies of the minutes of the meeting held on August 31st and October 16th, 2017, stating that Section A was listed as 885 acres. In addition, Mayor Reed and City Council were notified of these discrepancies by email before the annexation was finalized, and still went through the annexation with this knowledge. Pearland willfully and purposefully ignored the information. Mayor and City Council, you have every email that we've sent, you have every petition, public information request, and legal document given today in this testimony from Section A. As the past two votes for annexation readings on November 13th and November 27th, we pleaded for you to do the right thing, and you chose to continue forward with annexation, putting your own special interests first, instead of putting the people of Section A first. I am strongly suggesting that you fulfill your legal requirement and void this annexation. If necessary, we are prepared to go forward and continue to fight this unlawful annexation. As a final note, I do have a thanks for your group. I would like to thank Councilman Owens, Councilman Little, and Councilman Carbone for recognizing what is good and correct and right, and voted no on the annexation on both readings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kaye Hauser?
Good evening, Ms. Hauser. Thanks for being here. I know this is not my first time, this, my name is Kaye Hauser. I live at 2807 Honeysickle, Rosheren, Texas. I've lived there for 40 years. Mayor Reed, City Council, I'm here today to respectfully ask that you really listen to what we have to say today. At other meetings, we've had less than your complete attention. While we were pouring out our hearts with a plea to not annex us and the reasons why, the last five months have been a real eye-opener for me, and I have quickly learned that the city government in Pearland is... is like all the other government agencies. There are good guys, and there's bad guys. But I want to choose to believe that we're all good guys, and that given the opportunity, you will do the right thing. Politics and what a city wants and possibly needs shouldn't come before the expense of the residents that might become part of your city. I have become very familiar with the Texas Local Government Code, something that I've found that lawyers and judges are not familiar with for those that aren't involved with it on a daily basis. The only way I can explain what has happened with this annexation process is that the city of Pearland didn't follow their process and dot their i's and cross their t's or even physically walk the areas to be annexed. First and most importantly, you, the residents of Section A and the general public, don't know what the city of Pearland tried to cover up. Pearland city officials changed an official document that Mayor Reed had already signed by saying that the number of acres listed was a typo. The official document was ordinance 1548, and the number of acres listed was 885 on two pages, not 895 like the surveyor's abstract. When we picked up the official copy of the ordinance, 1548, the number of acres had been changed to 895. This was not a typo. It is carelessness in the handling of this annexation. When I called the differences in the number of acres on several documents for our section like ordinance 1548, the service pan, plan, the public notice in the newspaper, the agendas for the meetings, the mailers that we got, the letters that we got saying we're going to be annexed, all of those had 885 on them, not 895.
You have about 40 seconds.
I notified the mayor and city council by email before the annexation was final. I was ignored. No one responded. If they had, they would have caught their mistake and stopped the annexation. Instead, they chose to continue with the annexation as it was, hoping no one would catch anything. The Brazoria County DA's office saw the typo differently and sent Pearland a certified letter condemning their action and recommends that they follow the law and if they try to correct this action. I am recommending that you follow the law and void the annexation as it should have been when I gave the two Pearland officials the chance to stop the proceedings after being caught. I'm here to stay the course, and my neighbors in Section A are behind me when we all say that we don't want to be annexed. I do not want to be annexed, and I can safely say that I'm not the only one, as you can see by the others here in this room. I hear the timer. I think I've got minutes. Thank you.
And who else?
Secondly, the city of Pearland did not give the school district in our area accurate notice, as it is required by the Texas Local Government Code 43.905. After inspection of PIR, the Public Information Request for the notification to all the school districts involved in this annexation, Houston and Pearland received their notification. However, Alvin ISD did not receive their notice and instead were told about it at one of the hearings. And I have this on Word. I, I have this from somebody from Alvin's Independent School District. I used to work there, so I still have friends there. They won't work, this won't work for this particular process as this is a requirement of the Texas Local Government Code, and Pearland broke this law, making this annexation void. On this alone is all that Pearland or the state of Texas needs to void this annexation. Third, as I mentioned earlier, Pearland did not physically walk the area to be annexed as my neighbors and my husband and I did. If they had, Pearland would have found, they would have had to change the boundaries for Section A as it stands, as there are over 100 tracks, separate tracks of land on which one or more residential dwellings are located, which would have made our annexation voluntary, meaning that we would have been allowed to vote for our annexation versus involuntary, which was the land grab that this annexation was. Per Government Code 43.052H, if there is less than 100 sep, separate tracks of land on which one or more residential dwellings are located on each track, then that is volun, involuntary. That means they can take it. We're over 100. There was 159 tracks, but we're not counting the tracks. We're counting the residential homes on there. That's mobile homes, homes, whatever homes that you live in. And we have more than 100. I have walked it. I've verified it. Also, if you look at the app, the surveyor's abstract, he also proves that there's more than 100 residential homes on this annexation. It also shows that, that there, on the surveyor's abstract, that it showed that there were some vacant lots, seven or eight of them on Oleander. I've verified they are not vacant. And the abstract, the surveyor, when I called him, was amiss and said that I needed to talk to city council. He gave me specific names. I have not done that. He said because, he was told they were vacant. They're not vacant. Haven't been. So, I'm asking that city council do the right thing. And it's, in closing, in Pearland's hurry to be Senate Bill 6 and grab as much land as they could with that, this annexation, Pearland broke a number of laws and made costly mistakes that they hoped would fly. Mayor, city council, I'm asking one last time, please do the right thing and void the annexation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser. Ms. Shirley Hearn?
I'll, I'll give my time over to Louis Hearn. He's coming in after me.
Mr. Louis Hearn?
Good evening. My name is Louis Hearn. I live at 4142 County Road 48, Rosheren, Texas. You've heard the information given to you by Mr. and Mrs. Hauser. You expect the citizens to respect and abide by the law. Why should they? If you break the law, why can't they? This is the nation that was built on laws. You have been elected because the public gave the trust to you. Use their tax dollars wisely and in their behalf and follow the law. The law was created with a simple idea in mind. Minority, the people supports the majority of the government, and the majority protects the rights of the minority. What your attorney refers to as a typo is a violation of the law when you knowingly change something to reflect something else and is expressed expressly forbidden by law. Remember, mayor, you signed the ordinance as it was presented. Is this the, uh, is the Texas Municipal League or your insurance company going to represent you after you have blatantly broken the law? Or are you just going to have to fork out untold amounts of tax dollars to Olson and Olson to do their magic and keep this in courts for years and years to defend you? Three of you city councilman members get the picture. I truly believe that you others feel that the law does not apply to you as Pearland is a home rule city and not a general law city. I've actually been told that very thing by one of your city attorneys in the past. He advised me that the city could do most anything it wanted to because it's a home rule city. What he really meant was that he could ignore the law and keep me in civil court till I used all my money on a lawyer, and I had to give up. This is an extremely dangerous position for a city to take. Your attorney and staff's actions related by Mr. and Mrs. Hauser could and should be considered a taking. This term is usually used in condemnation proceedings where a government entity circumvents the law to obtain land. It is basically what you're doing here, taking. It's usually a civil rights violation, as this would be. Do you really want to be associated with something like this? If your annexation is because of surface water you need, you don't need to annex. Existing rights of way and interlocal agreements could be obtained. If your annexation of this area is to make sure the city gets tax dollars from any development coming in, your subdivision ordinance would address that. You would not let anyone in your ETJ even start a development unless it would agree to be within the city limits. Additionally, you would require the development to put in an infrastructure. This is even done in general law cities, but y'all all know this. The city of Pearland keeps raising taxes so much that it is running out of people who can live and own homes here. Shadow Creek is a prime example. Its nickname has become Foreclosure Creek, mainly because of the taxes. Why don't you take the care of the people who live here now? I think they would appreciate it. The letter you're going to discuss in executive session written by District Attorney Jerry Enney plainly states that you should consider corrective action. I do not believe that she meant fixing typos. She meant follow the law. There are so many violations of the Texas Government Code listed by Mr. and Mrs. Hauser that to bring this, the ordinance into compliance with the law, the annexation should and would be, have to be nullified and start over. What we are saying is you can't fix it. Are you going to trust your city attorney and his staff to fix it after they bungled it the first time with your neck on the line? Tampering with a government record is serious, but that is not the only thing that could be filed. Being removed from office is also serious and might result in you paying your own legal fees. The district attorney has the authority to do just that. The district attorney will not tell you what to do. She is not your lawyer. But if you look at the letter closely and read between the lines, she is telling you that the ordinance was created illegally. And if you don't repair the damage, there could be serious consequences. Read the letter closely. I believe she basically is saying start over and do it properly and legally. It is no secret that you annexed when you did, when you did to beat the deadline before this historic bill SB 6 came into law. Your city attorney and staff put you in this situation by their cavalier attitude and non-due diligence.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, sir. I think you already gave your time. What's your last name? Okay.
Why should you pay for their mistakes and laziness? You put your trust into them, and they failed you, just as the citizens of Pearland put their trust in you to follow the law. Are you going to fail them? Nullify the ordinance before it's too late. Tonight, you have an opportunity to do just that, to change the course this bungled annexation is taking. You can vote in executive session tonight to follow the law and put the annexation on the next agenda to nullify the ordinance. Then you can start over and follow the letter of the law. This would stop any litigation, both civil and criminal, and probably gain you some respect back. It's up to you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Erica Cardell? Ms. Erica Cardel, Cardell? Good evening, Ms. Cardell.
My name is Erica Cardell. I'm at 2907 Honeysickle, Rosheren, Texas, 77583. And I'm here also with Section A, and I just agree with everything that Kaye Hauser, Rod Hauser, and also, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, that they said, and I wish to be released from your annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Rosa Sade? Good evening. If you could state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Sade. I live on 2016 Tidjock Lane, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I'm on the Fort Bend County side of Shadow Creek Ranch, part of the city of Pearland. Dear mayor and dear council members, I would like to raise the Blue Ridge landfill order issue. I moved in in July 2016. I had no clue we had the landfill behind our home. Let us put this on the side and focus on the matter that it's been going on for years, even before we, we moved in. And this should come to an end today before tomorrow. I don't know where all of you live, but all of you are welcome to come to my house and to not enjoy the bad smell, the chemical smell. It infiltrates our bedrooms, our bathrooms. Like, I need to go to the restroom. The smell is there. There's nowhere we can go. We smell it everywhere we go. Gentlemen, I was wondering, actually, Mayor Reed, I would like to know what happened to the resolution number R, R 2017-68 that was passed, approved, and adopted by you on Monday, April 10th, 2017. I will quote the first paragraph, "A Resolution to the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, requesting the Executive Direct, Director of TCQ to suspend TCQ Municipal Solid Waste Permit Number 1505A until BRL demonstrates to the TCQ that landfill is operating in strict compliance with the permit and all rules and regulations governing nuisance, uh, orders and surface concentration monitoring associated with the landfill." Well, I'm no expert in the matter, but I can tell you for sure, they're not complying. It's on almost every day. And I'm wondering why the permit has not been suspended yet. It's been, today is February 26th. It's been 10 months, two weeks, and one day, to be exact. And this has been supposedly passed, approved, and adopted, and we're still suffering every day. The smell invades our home, like I previously said. I have been attending all kinds of meetings. The MUD, the Fort Bend County Central Appraisal District, Commissioners Court, they all pass the buck one to another, and especially making sure that you have to come to City of Pearland. And we all know that City of Pearland is remaining silent because of ongoing litigation. I would like to know where is this litigation going on? How much money has been spent so far on the lawsuit? Who is involved? Is, are the MUD and the counties involved in the lawsuit? Why not? If not, why not?
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up. Go ahead. I was just asking you to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. And I, I wanted also to ask you if you could please stop using our money to send our waste to the BRL until they comply. This is really serious. Again, I extend my invitation to all of you to come every day if you want and see by yourself and smell by yourself how it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for those comments. I'm gonna pass it back to Mayor Reed for the rest of the agenda.
I appreciate all of you being here and making your comments. That's what this period is about, so thank you, thank you for being here. And you did a good job of expressing yourself. I appreciate that. Moving in our agenda to item number five, which is public hearings we have none tonight. If you're following the agenda, the next one is item six, which is a consent agenda. I'll ask Councilmember Carbone if he'll present a consent agenda for our consideration.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item C from consent agenda, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action.
Let records reflect that.
Consideration of possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through D excluding C. So moved.
Okay, we have motion second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno is absent from the chambers. Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Motion passed, six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number seven. What matters to be removed from consent agenda, there were none. Item two, except for item number two. I'm sorry. Item C, as in Charlie. Ms. Councilmember Carbone, would you present that for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution R 2018-41. So moved.
Mayor, in, in conformance with the intent of the ethical ordinance, since I had a part to deal, to do with the negotiation on behalf of MHI on that development agreement, I'm gonna remove myself from the chambers and not participate in the discussion.
Wait until he gets out of here. We have a motion second and a discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. C is a change order. The city completed cooperation with their economic corporation, expansion and dramatic improvements to Hooper Road. improvements to Hooper Road, and this is in the lower Kirby Management District. Widen that, made it much safer, all the way up to Beltway 8 and from Spectrum. And this change order is the closeout, the truing up the quantities. You know, obviously, when you award the contract, you have estimates, and so this is truing up those and giving the actuals that we're involved with that. And I believe it's about 4% of the original contract cost, but recommend that for consideration so we can close that out.
Councilman?
Yeah. Mayor, I've got a question on that. And when you go down to page number seven of page eight in total, I know it lists the quantities over and under whatever it is, but I've never seen what those quantities are. Is there a list on the quantities? Is that what they were, overruns, underruns, and what have you? Was it, I'd like to see those overruns and underrun quantities.
I don't know if we can answer that right now, because, I don't know, do you know if Robert would have to?
I'd have to go up to PDC.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, those are typical with these, but we can either send that out later or however you want to handle it. We can provide, we can provide those, I'll just need to get the numbers from PDC, because they're running that project.
Yeah, I would like to see the number before I vote on this, to be honest with you. It's $156,000 on a $3 million-plus contract. And, you know, if there was something on here that showed bid quantities and see what we overrun, underrun, or whatever. Okay.
I can't give you the exact quantities, but I can give you the bulk of it was the engineer, when they put together their quantities for bidding, their estimates there, they measured front of curb to front of curb on the paving, instead of back of curb to back of curb, so there was basically a foot of paving for the entire length of the project. It was not in the quantities, and that was the bulk of the difference there. Along with, they, there was a segment of 12-inch water line that was counted as 8-inch water line as well.
So this is something that the LJA missed it on?
So, LJA missed that when they put their quantities together. LJA, as the design engineers, verified those final quantities, and they were confirmed by Cobb Finley, who did the construction management on the project.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see those before I vote on it, to be honest with you. I mean, the rest of them, they won't vote on it, approve it, but in the future, if we could have those, you know, other than just having the change order number on there, if we could vote on something like that, if we could have the quantities, just so we could see overruns and underruns of whatever it was, you know, maxed out, whatever. I'd appreciate that.
Had to be in the area last Sunday, it was yesterday, wasn't it? So I swung by and took a look at it, and the roadway's looking great. I appreciate the fact that you put a sidewalk out there, because there's sort of a division of the western boundary of the development along Kirby Drive, so I think it's, was, it's going to be a great, and it will provide an access to the Beltway 8 for a Mississippi U compressor plant to ship their heavy equipment out and get it to the port. So I think it's, I'm impressed with the quality of that. It looks real good, too. Any comment from the council on this item, other than it already been given?
What happens if we don't approve this? What happens if we don't approve this?
We'll bring it back on the next agenda with the quantities and see if you'll approve it then. It's, I mean, it's actually work completed that, you know, all of these construction contracts have estimated quantities that they're bid with, and then the contract says that we will pay actual quantities.
So you're paying this out of the contingency?
Yep. It's out of the project budget, the remaining dollars that are in the project budget. And the source of those funds are mostly from MHI as well as, I can't remember if it's the Management District or PDC, I believe it's PDC, as well as MHI paying for the cost of this project.
The only thing I'd say, I'd just like to see those numbers, see what the quantities were and how far we missed, and whether it was a bust on the quantities and increased price in some of the areas on there, but that's what I'd like to see before I'm able to vote on this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, we'll provide those actual numbers regardless. On one hand, we've got a meeting, you know, next week. On the other hand, you know, it sounds like, from what I've hearing, the contractor's not at fault and, you know, I think we probably want to be good to them. I don't know if a week matters to them, but, you know, for $150,000 to get that back to them, they're the ones that wouldn't get this money, so.
If the contractor's not at fault, who is at fault?
Mainly you determine that by the contract and seeing what the quantities were and where they overrun them or underrun the quantities on it and the engineers estimate. It sounds like what Trent said, it's based on the engineers estimate there, it's the estimated lower than what it was, actually was on there. But I would like, you know, I'd just like to see those before I make a vote.
If we don't end up voting on this tonight, I'd also like to add to that, I want to see what, how far below the next bidder was LJA, what the difference was. And I don't know if this makes up the difference, I know it's only 4%. And then, how often does this happen? I mean, it seems like we have a lot of engineering mistakes, and so how often has it happened with them specifically?
So, first of all, LJ did the design work, so, you know, that's qualification-based selection, it's not bid work. Whoever was the next low bidder on this project, we would have had the same issue, is that we would pay actual quantities instead of estimated quantities. So I don't, I don't think that changes anything. And then, the second question was how frequently are quantities missed? I'd say, you know, every project we have, at the end, there's an adjustment of quantities up and down to the actual quantities. This is probably a little bit outside of what we normally see in that, you know, they had more of an actual quantity bust in the way they calculated it, as opposed to just missed it by a little bit when they, when they did the material takeoff for the estimates.
So you hit it. The way it should have been on there, because, you know, a lot of times, you know, I'm no stranger to this business after 40-something years, but, you know, when you come in and you're bidding these, and a contractor can bid it, and they understand what the limits are and how much the quantities actually are, they, some of them, I'm not saying this won't happen that way, but they offset their bid in order to raise the price on those certain quantities so its additional funds come out of it. And so, that's what I'm wanting to see, by the bid prices.
Any other question from council? I do think we owe the corporation that we used part of their property while we did the construction work a big thank you for letting us, helped us out there with the little staging area that was only on their property lots. Council have any questions here or none? We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Motion passed, five to one, with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
We're back to a full council now. Moving in our agenda to item number eight on our council agenda, new business. Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, second final reading of ordinance number 1517-2, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Sir, so the city has a thoroughfare plan that helps guide our capital improvement program and development for building out the road mobility network. Have roads designated for their future classifications, and we went through a process over the last couple of months and looked for cleanups, minor amendments. That's what this represents, where we've, some roads have been built and wanted to show that, and others, you know, that development had taken care of. So we ran this through planning and zoning as well and got a positive recommendation. This is, again, just for these minor amendments that we've identified and talked about. We are committed to, and we're going to be going through this year, 2018, to update the thoroughfare plan and do the analysis for other areas, but we want to get these cleaned up first. So this is the second reading, council saw this last meeting.
Okay. You know, the actions we're taking here, I think, will help our city mobility considerably. Council have any question or comment?
Yes, Mayor, I have just one. In conformance, or as we, as we're modifying the thoroughfare plan, as we're looking into it with the contractor, or I'm sorry, with the consultant, one thing, Robert and Clay, if you would, could we look at where our truck routes are and look at, maybe as part of that thoroughfare, thoroughfare pound, thoroughfare plan update? My apologies for not being able to speak. As part of that update, let's take a look at, maybe we can expand truck route limitations and maybe be more clear as to the definition of what qualifies as a truck, particularly in the old side of the town, like maybe east of, or west of 35, but east of Cullen. There's a lot of older roads that are just deteriorating, and we have some truck traffic that's migrating over there and not necessarily needing to be on that road. So I think, since those roads are falling apart, we need to do what we can to try and protect them. So if we could incorporate in that study, I think that would be helpful for all of us. That's all I have, Mayor.
I can place your comment. Any other comment from council? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little is absent from the chambers. Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Okay. At complete and moving in our agenda to item number nine, mayor council issues for future council agendas. Council have any ideas you'd like to propose, present at this time? Hearing none, then let's move to item number nine. The next item would be the executive session of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 for consultation with city attorney for pending and potential litigation. Obviously, in executive session, we can discuss these items with our staff and other individuals that we invite into the executive session, but we cannot make a decision in executive session. However, upon return to open session, we do have new business item one available for council to address if needed. So this time, we will recess into executive session at 7:34. Questions in executive session? Being no further business for this council meeting and our, the executive session, we are adjourned at 8:46.